All right, so the pledge.
The pledge will be his to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You all have a chance to look at the bill for the evening. Your motion to accept bills?
I'll make a motion to accept bills.
Is there a second?
No, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hi, Bob.
Hey, guys.
Enjoying it?
Good.
Approval of the February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes. I'll second.
All of you there?
Aye.
All right, mayor's report. We'll start off with our Empire State Development Grant was shot down. That was to try to benefit the village for the upgrade to our substation. As soon as that was turned down, though, the GCEDC immediately applied and are applying for a fast New York grant. So we're in the midst of working on that now with GCEDC. And we had a conference call the other day with them, and they're gathering information.
Joe Zatson, part chairman for electrical here?
Yes, yes. Mainly for what will affect actual up in the park. So we had to kind of break out the Nortera section of it and the village section of it, and we gave them a figure that would directly impact the industrial park. So we're working on it. So hopefully this grant goes through first.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
While I'm talking about electric, we did put in our hydro allocation for economic development to get raised, and we had a nice talk with the power authority, and the application has been sent in for that, which had to be done before they break ground up there. So we've done that, and it looks like it's a pretty sizable increase in our hydro allocation. Should go through.
Joe, I know we lost allocation when we extended, reopened, or nearly, and they've since closed or about to close. How do we get that back?
That will go back into the pool. There's only fifty-six megawatts available.
Yeah.
And whenever the system loses industry, they pull it back out, it goes back in, and then they disperse that among.
So you will see something with that.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah. And if ours should go through, then all the system will lose some of theirs, so then we get our allocation. So that's good news. I put in here again on the concerts in the park last month in my meeting, I incorrectly gave a date, I believe, July meeting, our concert is actually July thirty-first. So those dates are set now for June twentieth, July thirty-first, and August nineteenth. We have plenty of vendors for these concerts. So we're waiting for the Nortera. Hopefully by the end of this month, we have our lease for the property over where our electric is housed, our substation, and the, basically our whole operational, whether it's on their property. So we're waiting for that fifty-year lease, and I'm told it should be here by the end of March. So that's from upper management telling me that. So I'll stay on them, because we need that in place. We met, the Tree Park Committee met on Wednesday, the sixth. We had a great meeting, and I'm happy to say that eight memorial benches have been donated by various organizations and individuals. All donations paid for these benches, so we're going to get these into the park, and we want to get those in before Park Day this year, which is the first week of June, so.
Have they been ordered, Joe?
They're here. They're here. They're in our house.
Do they have, like, main plate on them or things like that, or is it just benches?
We're, yeah, we're making up, we're having them made up.
And don't even?
Yeah, people can kind of get, you know, say what you want on the flag.
Right.
Make what kind of person if you want, so. Restrooms, the guys are outfitting them with those mag locks, so we can automatically lock those, you know, except the times we want it to open in the morning and shut at night, so. And we've received EFC approval for the wastewater manhole rehabilitation. This will be the last item to be addressed as part of the current wastewater project. And we did have some mechanical issues at the sewer plant, a lot of moving parts down there, and a lower motor and a pump needed replacement. And there's also an issue with the hard drive memory and passy controls is helping to troubleshoot that. Okay, and we've been awarded the Tree City Award again to the Arbor Day Foundation, and this is our thirteenth year in a row, so.
Everybody's had time to read my report. The only really thing to change or add is the insurance policy with Neimer. I mean, it was sent in yesterday. Aside that, take a look at my report. March nineteenth, the election, everything's all ready to go. We've set up absentee ballots, we're permanent absentee people, and then I have some people who request it. That's Tuesday, Friday, March nineteenth.
What are the hours?
Noon and nine.
Noon and nine.
That's right here, right?
Yes.
Did Jerry get his report?
No.
No, so, no, someone? Okay, there are motion to accept the officer's reports.
I can make a motion to accept the officer's.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Trustee concerns, Paul?
No.
Okay, Todd?
No.
Michael?
Nothing, ma'am.
Okay, next thing on the agenda, contract award for the refuse. We received two bids. You want to give the amounts, Courtney?
Right, there are two bids. Casella bid one hundred thousand, five thirty-two, thirty. Waste Management bid one hundred thousand, one hundred dollars.
We've got two bids. Waste Management came the lower of the two bids. At this time, I'll give you, gentlemen, if you want to say anything about these bids or...
Anthony.
Go ahead.
My name's Tim, by the way. I'm the route manager for Waste Management, Tim Trader. How you doing, guys?
Good.
I've got nothing to add. I just met up with Courtney and stuff a few weeks ago, and this is Larry Lasco. He's the public sector sales guy, so he's brand new to Bergen and Genesee County, so him and I are out there doing what we can together right now. So thank you for having us, and thank you for allowing us to submit the bid.
I'm Eric Santos. I'm the operations manager of Celine Missouri. Hopefully continue to work with you guys in the future. You know, glad to be here and thank you for having me.
Okay. I looked over these bid specs pretty carefully today to make sure everything was, you know, was good, and the way the bid specs went out was for trash toders and then bins for the recyclables. I felt the specs were pretty clear, how they were written, and I guess I see no reason not to take the low bid, to be honest.
Can I ask a question? Sure. Do they still plan on doing the one bulk item if we go with Waste Management?
Yes, that was part of the bid specs. The board members got anything they want to add?
There are a handful of reasons why you could take the higher bid, but I don't think either one of those two reasons that I can think of apply to this. Again, I agree with you, Mayor, that we are legally obligated to take the lower of the two bids.
I know there was some confusion here about the toders for recyclables came into play here, but that was never addressed in the bid specs that went out. So I have to make it apples to apples, and it's the bins, the way it was sent out on the bid specs, and I have to base my decision on that. And on that, to bargain a good base here, I think we need to take the lower of the two bids. I think you both have very good service, you've done work for it before in the past, and you both are very good. But my feeling is we go with the lower bid. Any other discussion on this? Is there a motion to accept Waste Management's bid?
I'll make a motion to accept Waste Management's bid in the amount of one hundred thousand, one hundred dollars.
And it's a three-year contract, correct?
That's right.
For the next three and six years. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry? Next thing on here is our contract award for our septic pumping. We opened the bids on that also. Courtney, what did those come in at?
Two hundred and eighty dollars per tank.
An increase of how much?
Hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars per tank. Okay. We need to set up a public hearing. We'd like to set it up in the month of May. How much would you be on May eighth? Not for a hearing. You need to have a hearing on that.
Not the word of the bed.
Okay, not so as if it's... Right, okay.
And the bids are closed?
Yeah. Okay, so tonight then we just have to accept the lower of the bid.
Right.
Okay. All those in favor? AD calls?
Yeah, we need a motion.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept AD calls of two hundred and eighty dollars per septic tank, per visit.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, except for May, public hearing.
When does this current contract begin?
June, uh, May third.
May third.
This is a lot.
It is a lot.
It is a lot.
You know what the bid's on? So we will have a public hearing then. Me? You?
Yeah, let's go to bed.
All right, let's take a pause here. Is there something we have to do? Emily, come up, please. Your old seat, huh?
Yeah.
Emily was a trustee of ours, what, ten years?
Yeah, ten years.
Yeah, and we have this proclamation for you. Whereas Emily Marvel is retired as a trustee of the Village of Bergen, a position she held for ten years. Whereas Emily Marvel served the village with professionalism, attention to detail, and dedication to fiscal responsibility. Whereas Emily Marvel also served the village as director of the Bergen Summer Recreation Program, proclaiming that the mayor and trustees of the Village of Bergen, New York, Genesee County, extend their appreciation with the utmost respect to Emily Marvel for her years of service. Give you that. Our tradition here, Village man.
Awesome, thank you.
We want you to have that. A sincere thank you for all your service.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks, guys.
Get a picture.
All right. I supposed to hold these or what? What's the protocol?
Ah, if you can pull them up, sort of, not sort of, you know. Your family want to get in there, get one together.
Marshall, do you remember this place? He used to come all the time.
Yeah, with little Lou or something.
Yeah.
He's mine. You do anything? No. He's kind of easy looking. Thank you very much. Thank you, Emily.
Thank you, guys.
Yep. We're doing these. Paul, proclamation for Paul Robinson here. Whereas Paul Robinson is retired as a trustee of the Village of Bergen, a position he held for four years. Whereas Paul Robinson diligently served the community with professionalism, attention to detail, and unparalleled experience. I mean that. Whereas Paul Robinson is a lifelong resident of the village, was an employee, and served as liaison to the Citizens Advisory Board of the Mill Seat Landfill, proclaiming that the mayor and trustees of the Village of Bergen, New York, Genesee County, extend their appreciation with the utmost respect to Paul Robinson for his years of service. Can I leave now, Joe? Very nice, thank you. Well, thank you. I'd like to tell you. That's all you got to do. Want a photo with the baby, too?
Yeah, bring him up. Thank you.
Thank you. See ya. Thanks. All right, Courtney, let's straighten this out. Yeah.
Public hearings here?
Okay, so we're going to have a sewer rate discussion. We need a May public hearing, and that would be at six to five. And this sewer rate discussion would be in regards to how our sewer budget and the impact on the principal and interest for sewer upgrade, and also for the impact of how this increase in pumping the tanks is affecting our sewer budget, and a need to increase the quarterly rate.
So I gave everybody a copy of the little thing I put together, kind of outlines my thoughts. Right now, we pump tanks every three years, and tanks really, you know, we save three to five years. There's a lot of people in the village who, one person, two person, or, you know, we'd probably stretch it out further, but, you know, you can arise some problems if you do. So we're suggesting taking, going from every three years to every four years, stretch that out a little bit, so we're pumping less tanks a year. And by doing that, just that change from three to four years, we'd be saving ten thousand three hundred and sixty dollars a year. And then the other piece would be to increase the debt service charge on the bill, not the usage charge, but the debt service charge, because there's one of each on the bill. The debt service charge, and this is what it directly applies to, change it from forty-five dollars to sixty-five dollars, so we'd be twenty dollars a quarter increase. So that would increase the revenue from sewer rents to forty-three thousand, four forty. And the cost of the increased costs, and I've been talking about this for a number of years, this was going to, all the bands that were going to come due for the, all the work we've done and improvements we've had to make on the sewer plant, UV, the upgrades to the lift stations and control panels, all state requirements. So the increase in debt service alone is thirty-five thousand, three fifty, and then increase in, you know, the one is increasing a hundred dollars per tank to have the tanks pumped, so that's an increase of seventeen thousand, six fifty. So that's increased our appropriations fifty-three thousand, one eighty-two, and if you agree with the changes, that'd be fifty-three thousand, eight hundred, so that we cover our new additional costs, the buffer of just under seven hundred dollars. So that's the proposal. If you look on the next two sheets, that breaks it down by different, so it increases to be twenty dollars per unit, and so it breaks, it shows you the different insider, inside residential, outside residential, inside commercial, outside commercial, and industrial. They all have different numbers of units. All single-family homes are a single unit, and you get multiple units when you have apartment buildings or additional apartments in the building, or commercial based on usage.
What's the differences between the inside residential and outside residential?
So the, it was something that was put in place way back when we upgraded the plant, and people on the east side of nineteen, because our main delivery behind their property, they were a lot tied into it, so they have a fixed rate, and they're, because they're outside of the area, if they fail to pay, we can't put it on their taxes, because we don't control their taxes, so we had, it was arranged with the town, so that we pay, so we could give them the difference of them, and then they would put on their taxes. So the other pages just kind of breaks it all down and shows you what you're going to do and what the, we're just going to take a fact, where each class where the money's coming from, and who's going to lay.
So twenty dollars a quarter, how many quarters?
Four.
Four.
So the normal, a normal single, a normal single-family home would be eighty bucks a year.
The current bid, is that a three- or four-year bid?
That's three years.
Three. Three years, so if we go to four years, that would be beyond this current bid, right?
Well, yeah, we, we, everything's on a cycle, so we have to continue to pump, and so the next bid would be, you know...
Potentially increase there as well.
I would imagine with them, there'll be an increase in, maybe in the fourth year, absolutely. Yeah, things aren't getting cheap for us, for sure.
No, with the D E C mandates, there's extra, you know, everything's going up, wages are going up, AD, that's why he's up a hundred dollars a tank now, set his cost, and the bond payments, the interest payments.
Do we pump every year, no matter what? Is it, we're taking every year, we pump a certain number of tanks?
Right. Right, and right now, it's, you know, there's...
That's on what?
On the front page.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, yeah, so there's...
So current's a hundred and seventy-five tanks a year?
Right.
Okay.
Approximately, it varies a little bit. There's, you know, there's three routes, you do it every three years, so some of the routes have more tanks than the others, you know, but not by many, it's like maybe ten tanks, and there's some, there's twenty-nine tanks that we pump out a year, or twice a year.
Question. Does that include going for a four-year then? Four-year intervals instead of three?
Yes.
Okay, so the numbers here reflect the four-year.
Four years, yeah. You could stretch it to five, but you get to, it's starting to give us some problems with houses that have a lot of people, and then I think...
You're starting to get a lot of...
...some treatment plant, right, not really set up to treat.
Exactly. The low-usage customers wouldn't have a problem, but the high-usage customers would start running into problems.
We don't see the water bills to determine the higher or low use.
We do.
For residential as well?
Yes, we get a water, you know, a report from the North County Mars for every October.
So we kind of have an idea then of how you...
Yeah, so there's, there's two parts to your, your sewer bill. The first one is the flat debt service per unit, and then the second part is you get charged by, you know, there's four tiers that you get by water consumption from that water port from the county, or our internal county, that's how we base the usage fee.
Schedule a public hearing, that's what we're going to?
Right, so if you, if you agree that this is the way to go, and this is which, then you can schedule a public hearing, basically to change the rates or kind of changing the law, so we'd have that public hearing.
Sewer is a law, not a tax.
Got it, okay.
So we'd have to have a public hearing for that, and then, you know, with the community's permission, move forward, what is decided.
So is there a motion to accept AD calls bid for the pumping of the tanks?
I'll make the motion to accept AD calls, motion, proposal for two hundred and eighty dollars per tank.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and is that a public hearing? Motion to make a public hearing for May eighth?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Curried?
That would be six o'clock.
Yes. Okay. All right. You have a resolution here for substation?
Yes. Those came, they came in early later, I just got them. One came in around noon time, and then one came in at two, so.
Okay, we have two bond resolutions. One is for the substation financing, and the other is for the new digger Derek. So the first one I'll do is the substation financing.
To look for a motion vote?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to bond out 3.4 million dollars.
Your second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Curried? Digger Derek?
So, just to jump in for a second, sorry. This is also, we have to have a hearing on this, it's, it's.
Call a referendum?
Right, so it's subject to a permissive referendum. So this is just the first part, and then we'll advertise it, and then it will go out for a permissive referendum, we'll have a public hearing for that. And then, ready to go as well, then we'll prove it.
Can you make a motion for a public hearing?
Well, that is not too long to separate together.
Why don't we do them separate? Yes, a motion for a, for a referendum from substation.
I'll make a motion for the substation referendum.
Your second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So it's April 10th, also it's at six o'clock.
These are during normal board.
Yes, it'll be, it'll be Wednesday, the meeting day, just earlier.
Okay, the next one's a resolution for the Digger Derek financing. What's the amount of that one, Courtney?
$340,000.
I will make a motion to accept the proposal for $330,000 for the, for 300, yeah, $330,000 for the Digger Derek.
Your second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And can I have a motion for a, for a, for a referendum for that?
I'll make a motion for a referendum on the Digger Derek.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that'll be at 6:15 on April 10th. We need to schedule a public hearing for the land purchase, that small piece of property over on Gibson Place that borders our substation and our lift station.
You need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the purchase of the property.
Okay, your second?
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Curried? We'll do that on May 8? 6:15.
So the next two meetings, two public hearings, each 6:00, 6:15.
Okay, lack order?
Yeah.
2023, 24 budgets. Before we even do that, let's, let's do privilege on the floor, anyone? Anyone want to share?
Just wanted to come up, introduce myself. I have some business cards I'd like to share with you folks, if that's fine?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Like Tim said, I'm the public sector senior account executive. So when it comes to the bids and everything, that's my job to put together competitive bid. So happy that things worked out here. You'll have my direct cell phone number and my email. I'm sure there's gonna be a need for communication moving forward. I have no problem answering the phone call, email, any time of the day. Please do not hesitate to reach out. W N looks forward to, and I hope you guys are in a great spot when it comes to your rockets.
I'm sure you'll get to know Courtney.
Absolutely. Yeah, pleasure to meet you. Pleasure to get you. Great seeing you again.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you all.
Used to do the trash recycling.
There you go.
Yeah.
So you're affiliated with.
Any questions, comments, concerns, pop up.
How you doing today? Cam board from Houston Survivor Board?
Oh, okay. Pretty straightforward, yeah, yeah. Absolutely.
Okay.
Thanks so much.
Very welcome. Thanks, Zoom.
When is this next one, too? Katie, overhand.
When will you be bringing the toters and bins?
I mean, after June 1st.
After June 1st?
Yes. Probably the first Tuesday after June 1st, I imagine, right?
Yes, so we'll get real super close on that when we figure out how and when and who. Tuesday's still gonna be the service day, right? June 1st is what they?
Yeah, so the fourth.
So the fourth will be the first service day. We would probably want the residents to have them a week before. Does that make sense?
What date do you think they're based? I'll put it in my newsletter to all the residents.
Yeah, let's confirm that first before we get in there.
Yeah, let Courtney know the date.
I see that as the 28th, really. And Casella would probably almost want to coordinate that same day to get their equipment out, too. I think that'll work for me, so. We're gonna shoot for 10 to deliveries, one of the equipment on the 28th, then the residents will have it right the week, right? So, something that just, not to tie you guys up even more, but we won't be dumping any Casella totes after June 1st. So the residents will have to make sure they're not using theirs, because then if we end up breaking one of their totes or something like that, we won't have a way to replace them.
Do you think, I mean, Casella would probably pick their totes up, right?
I would hope so.
I would think when they dump them, we would take them.
Yeah, I don't doubt.
They'll bring a truck behind them as well.
Right.
I don't know how they're gonna do it. I know if we were doing it, we would follow the truck right after they're empty and scoop them all up, sink it, so.
There may be some people who might not put their garbage out the day that Casella goes out in hopes to keep their.
I've seen a lot of it over the years where now it's June 4th, and people still had their trash in the Casella totes. So that could be a problem, might wanna revisit that in the newsletter somehow, so maybe.
Okay.
Of course, comes across, we can send our guys to the unit.
Okay. All right, thanks, guys. See you soon.
Man on the truck taking the totes, or is it one-arm pickup?
So, to start, it's gonna be a guy on the back of the truck dumping totes traditional style. Eventually, we have, depending on who you talk to, we got 12 to 15 new trucks coming in with the one-arm. But eliminating the guy on the back, much safer, cost savings, and that guy can just use the mechanical arm and go that way.
How, will another truck come around to get the recyclables?
Yeah, yeah, so it'll be two trucks. Yep.
Have all, no matter what.
Yep, yep.
And the one bulk item, how does that get picked up?
So that would be, how is that rode up in there? Does it have to be scheduled?
It's gonna be manual, to start.
So the residents are putting it out the day of service? So.
When it comes to automation, that's down the line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the guys on the two-man rearload truck would scoop up the bulk at that point. When we go to the automated one-arm, we would have a separate bulk truck that would follow same day or the next day.
Thanks.
Yeah, good question. We'll have it all worked out, no matter what. But the start will be traditional guy on the back driving the truck, and then the recycle driver's just the one-man show. He dumps everything right in the side.
Trickle schedules the bulk pickups with the village office, and then they relay it to you folks.
They constructed me.
Fully aware of that.
Yeah, yeah, and that works out great. Kathy over there at the office, we have a great relationship, as we will here, too. So just to clean that up, and my goal is to make sure that it's off the streets that day. Sometimes there might be the one-off or something, but it'll be right at the top of the agenda for the next day, so.
Very good.
Sound good?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks for your time.
Yep.
The reason I ask, the reason I ask, if I can have a second.
Sure.
Out of the Silver Lake Association, and we're dealing with waste management down there, which should be cast on. Waste management has been stonewalling us as far as the bulk pickups stuff, because they got the one-arm, and they won't come back. And they leave stuff laying there for a long time, and people will come, and they call me, of course. You know, oh, I've got all the stuff, I need something to pick up. So, yeah, and so I just want you to be aware that, you know, there may be an issue with those one-arm bandits, because they're, wow, we don't want the guy to have to get off the truck. We just, you know, kabai, boom, ba-boom, ba-boom, and they have to be turned around the right way, and they have to be three feet apart. If they're not, they go right by. Yeah, so just, just wanted to warn you.
So when it's windy and they tip over, they're just gonna drive right by.
Oh, yeah, if there's one guy in the truck, he will not stop, I'm telling you, yeah. So again.
Some of it depends on the operator, too, because some of them guys just go pick up a golf ball with those things.
Yeah, it does. Wiggle them around. But again, they're pressured, these guys are pressured not to get out there.
Timeline, absolutely.
Okay, it is in the bid specs that you have to pick up one bulk item a week, so. We'll keep an eye on it, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, budgets?
Courtney's? Yep, so with the electric, electric and general budget, there's been, the only, very, very minor change was I got the actuals for healthcare insurance after we signed a union contract, I got the actuals. So the change was very minor, it was only a few dollars different than my projections. So it affected those two budgets almost, not at all, not even. The big changes are in the sewer. After I received the actuals for the debt service for the loan that's gonna go up, the ban, the bond anticipation note that goes out for long-term financing. The night of that, that's how much we're gonna pay this year towards principal and interest. And then after that, it'll be about to pay going forward. So that's a, you know, a big nut. And then on top of that, with the cost of the tanks, pump, tank pumping increase. So those two things changed, so. But I also, assuming that the rate increase gets passed, I put that in the budget. Just so you see what it looks like. If I do have that, we can. I put back in a little bit more contingency, and I put a little bit more back into the equipment fund, which is only $5,000, still decreased $10,000 over last year. So we're able to have a little bit more room here, so it's being scary.
In the event that they have to replace a tank, does that cost also increase?
Well, we, we would go get quotes for that.
Oh, they don't, they don't handle that?
Well, they can, but it would be a separate contract. Yeah.
I didn't know that was part of their deal.
Yeah, and it's not part of the contract for the pumping. So we had one this summer go, we found that was bad on the Kmart. So we got bids from Russell Plumbing and AD Call. And Russell Plumbing had the lowest bid there, so. But we have, separate from our main funds for that, we have a reserve for the tanks and lines replacement. There's about 170,000 dollars now we have set aside for that, so when takes are going back, we have some good money to replace them.
That's a surprise, though.
Right, yeah, well, I wish it was more. The intention was to put some aside every year to there, but, you know, when you're either losing money or breaking even, or, you know, I think that the, last year was the best year that the sewer had. 13 years I've been here, and, you know, it was $9,000 over. So, yeah, it was $9,000 in the lock. That was the best year so far, so it's hard to put money aside when that's happened.
It was all you, too. It's crapshoot, but that really is.
It is. Yeah, and there's so many things that could break down up there.
Yeah, you're trying to predict that, and you just can't, the labor to fix it. It's like trying to predict your snowplow hours if you're way over on a.
And nothing when it comes to wastewater and things like that, governmental type of stuff, enough is cheap, it just.
There are many customers for that sort of stuff.
We knew the day was coming where we would have to start paying this principal and interest back. This project started like five years ago.
Before I started here, before I got here.
And then COVID hit, it got delayed, but it's, it's been in the works for, you know, many years. And now it's time to start paying back, so all the things that were done, they had to be done.
It has a 30-year note, too. So, you know, the plant up there has 20 years left on it. We have 30 years on this one, so there's really not much hope in sight.
Pay it off, anybody know on that?
Yes.
It's just what happened with the oil plant, you know, you're just constantly in debt. We're such a small village, too, that you don't have the volume of residences, you know, sharing the cost burn. So it's tough.
Yeah, so that's what I just wanted to bring to your attention. Now, if you have any questions from the last meeting, or the changes I've made in the sewer budget.
So that does reflect the proposed increase of $20?
Yeah. Yes, it does.
It's an unfortunate increase, but I think you can see the numbers.
Yeah.
It's tough. Tough on everybody. Tough around its own.
Sewers are tough for every village, not just, not just Virgin Village. Everybody has same issues, same problems. Not enough money, not enough revenue, too many, too many issues with old systems.
Byron's got it going out for a little setup, too.
They need, all, they're under the same mandates that we are, they need to do a UV system, and they've got three beds, so they wanna try and merge all three beds with lift stations, so they only have to do one UV treatment. So, yeah, they've got some good money. Big ticket.
A lot of pipes coming up. A lot of pipe coming down, maybe those two.
Fortunately, it's forced main, it's, you know, it's HDP, it's cheap, but, you know, the labor to put it in is what kills it, so.
Okay. So. Usually, we pass the budget in the meeting in April. So that'd be April 10th. I don't know if you want to schedule the public hearing for the budget on April 10th as well. Or you want to schedule a second meeting in April, say the 24th for the budget.
We've already got one, two on there already?
Two on there already, and we'll have, we'll have.
Of the board field, an extra meeting, or?
I'd say the 24th. That's, it's the budget, so I'm assuming. I would... I would hope there'd be some voices that would at least want to speak, so to that way.
Yeah, I'd like to give it public more time.